Payroll today, isn't it?
Yep. payroll only, yes.
The rest of it?
I'm ready.
Becky, are you ready to go?
Okay, it is 9:00 a.m.
I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be meeting by the, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. Joe, are you up for that? I forgot to mention something. Chris was last ready. Our first agenda item this morning is to open with prayer. Commissioner Hugley, would you lead us, please?
Sure. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for the many blessings that we have, not only in this country but around this table. Thank you for the abundant moisture and the good crops that we've had. We would ask, Father, that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves and that you watch over those that protect the many freedoms that we enjoy. We would ask that your wisdom be with us today in our deliberations, and we pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 17, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held on July 17, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
That's Dane.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item on our agenda is consider the following. First, claims and treasuries receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Paul, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign a letter of understanding with the Nebraska Auditor for Public Accounts for the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Becky, I suppose you have that paperwork with you?
I do.
And this would be an audit that they perform yearly, is that correct?
Yes, that's annual. You're sometimes after the first meeting, September?
After?
For one day.
For one day?
Spending hours and hours and hours and hours, sending all this stuff in.
Say again?
They, they are only here in person one day.
So, I, I know you'd mentioned that, and we've had a problem in the past, so except for our single source audit, is there, that's the main problem, because trying to somebody to do a single source, because I know there were a couple other things that we didn't necessarily agree with on the audit last time, remember?
It's the, it's the federal audit. There's not enough people to leave the federal audit.
Should we? Well, it's probably too late now. When do we have to have this signed?
Uh, we did a three-year contract. I can't remember if it's year two, I think.
Oh, so we're still in a three-year contract with, oh, that answers that question. We'll talk about it another time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that you sign a letter of understanding with the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts for the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Becky, could you tell me what the charge is for them? Do you recall?
Oh, it's about twenty, between 25,000 and 30,000.
Hold it, hold, no, 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 no. Stop. Hold on. Um, you know, I, I only have myself to blame, so I'm not looking at anybody else. What did we used to charge our friend when he did it?
Ten, twelve.
Okay. Answers my question.
My shares was 22,500, and then where was some travel and that, and then two, that made it.
Okay.
Well, the reality is, you don't have a lot of options.
No.
Not a lot.
No.
Then, there.
I, maybe Alex wants to talk to it, too. It's, it's just, these reports are not small reports. I mean, they're not, they're hundred-page reports, and then we scan it all, and then they're constantly contacting us, where's this, where's that? It's like, we scan all that stuff for you. It's on, last year, they didn't even take the thunder eyes. We put them all on thunder eyes, but they didn't take the thunder eyes last year.
Instead of coming in our office, knowing the program, having done it before, go through, make a nice pleasant thing.
And, I mean, they actually, Alex actually wanted to come, like, this month, and like, we're like, we are too big of a county, we, we're still trying, we, I don't even, hell, just closed out our year end. But, I mean, we're too big of a county.
Any other discussion? Anything positive to discuss?
Well, do we need to, does it, need to lean on them a little? Doesn't do any good.
Did he reply when you asked for September? He said, uh, he did reply. That was the one line replied.
Well, maybe we need to talk to him and say, you know, please help make this little more user-friendly. I don't, it's not going to cost us anything to ask, is it? We ask politely.
Maybe we should see how it starts out.
We've dealt with Rachel before, I believe, and maybe we can reach out.
I don't really feel about fieldwork at all. She was on the turn yesterday, last year. Yeah, I don't know. I guess we'll see who can get.
Keep us abreast of how that's progressing, and if you need some assistance from, assistance from the board, that's, that's a good point, we might.
I think it would be appropriate to set a right, the right tone.
I mean, we have nothing to hide.
No, exactly.
They have to understand, like, for us with protests, there was no way, I mean, we didn't have, I mean, nobody had time to stand and ask him.
Do they have a time period that they have to have it completed by? No?
Like, years of federal audit, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and I, I actually contacted Jeff last year and asked him to please push Lincoln County back on the schedule, and he said he would, and the [inaudible] first thing this year, so.
How much notice do you usually get before they come?
Well, they go for two, two weeks, not, you know. Not quite enough time. So, on a positive note, we all, we all get it done.
Don't be ragged.
But on another, maybe positive note, having done it a couple years now, knowing the things that they want, ought to help a little bit, other than time, right?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Okay, go back to Becky. Okay, next item is condition of the treasury from January 1, 2023 to June 30, 2023, as submitted by the county treasurer. I've got that here in front of me.
Now, you've got the real one there in front of you.
Okay, so, tell me what, um, would you like to come up, please, and explain what I have in front of me, and fill us in again on your name, please?
Alex Kretschel, Lincoln County Treasurer, um, just a standard six-month report you get every six months, um, per state statute, um, cash in banks, any accounts payable, and just some signatures, is really.
And it looks like, um, tell me about the tort claims here on this one page. I see we still have that one from the tire that was destroyed or damaged.
Yes, I have to list, that, that actually came from me, too, Alex. That actually was the, you have my copy, uh, that actually was any tort claim that was filed, not that we paid them out, but what's been filed, what we sent out, which was just, and then the one from the regional center, which has been there since, I don't know.
Eighty-nine.
The Lumen Technologies?
Lumen Technologies.
Okay.
Yeah, that was number optic project.
Out south, on?
There was two, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. And what is the status on those two? Those are, were not, are they?
We did not pick them.
But we still have to acknowledge those on this.
There were many complaints that are filed, yes.
Okay.
If you, if you go across those lines, you'll notice the different types of budgeting that most of those offices do versus the county. When you look at a beginning balance and an ending balance, you look at the county up on top, starting out 21-7, ended up with 25-9, look at most of the others, starting with, you know, like, there's eight million down, 800,000, 700,000, down to 16,000, so, just know that we do things a little bit differently. That's what those numbers, most of those numbers would tell you.
Okay. Okay, colleagues, such your pleasure.
Since the treasurer felt compelled to sign it and hasn't have, doesn't seem to have any qualms about the numbers, I would make a motion to accept the condition of treasury as submitted by the county treasurer.
And authorize?
And authorize. Well, actually, we all sign it.
Well, we do.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure I want to sign it.
We're all going down together, Joe.
I'll second that motion, then.
You should have tried, I was saying, to you, just for the heck of it.
Yeah.
He's going for coffee. I'm not sure he'll get that done.
As to form, right?
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
I wonder if we could make that for our chairman only?
I have.
I didn't sign that, right?
Yeah.
I'll sign.
Oh, it's Becky. Alex and Becky get to sign it twice, so they're double.
Guess it's just you and me.
So far. Okay, next item on our agenda is to receive an order filed fee reports as submitted by the county sheriff.
Chairman, I would move to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff, in the amount $4,312.66.
Let's see, we have, we have two of them.
Is there another one behind it?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see the second one. Yeah, in addition, the second amount is $3,883.43.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the two fee reports from the county sheriff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is to authorize the chairman to sign the county interlocal participation agreement for 2023, 2024 with Region Two Human Services for the Behavioral Health Match. Is this an annual?
It is.
Interlocal participation?
It is. It's based on population, uh, per cabinet is how they do it, and we have, for example, um, you know, one of the deals is the Opportunity Center here. We have, Region Two has their main office here with all their counseling, and you look at the amounts of dollars that are spent, I think that, I'm not sure what it is, maybe eighth of a percent, tenth of a percent, or something that falls on the county end, as most of those are state and federal matches, mostly come down from the federal government through the state government in the forms of tens of millions of dollars, so. It's, um, it really is a pretty doggone good service for the county.
Region Two encompasses quite a number of counties here, it looks like.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, and Lincoln County is the largest population, percent of the total is 35%.
It is, I remember that it used to be, well, it used to be, a lot of things used to be, but many years ago, uh, Dawson County was not second. You know, we had looked at Red Willow County, Keith County as some of the bigger ones, but if you notice now, Dawson County, about the last 20 years, 25 years, have been coming up, and so they do have a, an office, also a sub-office for some of these services in Dawson County as well.
All right, see. Okay, super.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the county's interlocal participation agreement for the 2023, 2024 year with Region Two Human Services for Behavioral Health Match.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Oh, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
How are those payments usually made, Becky? Is it monthly, quarterly, annual?
I think we do monthly.
Monthly.
Okay, I don't know.
We used to do it quarterly, and then they kind of asked if we could pay something that your guys can do.
I don't know.
Because I think I recall seeing that claim, claim come across our desk, so.
We're such a big one, they need the cash flow.
Okay, it is night, morning, ladies snuck in on us there. It is 9:18. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on July 17, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held July 17, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Weems?
That's Dane.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. We have none at this time. Thank you. Next item is letters of explanation for late filing of the 2023 homestead exemption applications. It looks like we have a few in front of us today. Is that correct?
Yes, you do.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Angie Forbes, County Assessor, is on this.
Good morning.
Okay, looks like we have several of them here.
Yeah, I think there should be seven. They all have their individual letters attached to them with their reason why. They vary. Several of them this time were just, they didn't realize there was a June 30 deadline. I think there was a couple that had illness or somebody didn't drive, but yeah, they, they all have their individual reasons. None of these in front of you today were late filers last year. They all filed on time last year.
Uh-huh.
So, I guess, I, I, I know when we turn a late filing into the department revenue, we have to have their individual name in the minutes. We send a copy of the minutes, so I don't know, can they make one motion if they say their individual separate names, or do they need to make seven separate motions to have it in the minutes that way, if they're a filer? I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I thought we only had two, didn't we?
We have seven.
Seven today.
Oh, you know, I took this thing earlier and read it, but it's been.
If you want to make separate motions, they're all, they're all separate.
I, I, um.
Could be one motion, and they just have everybody's name.
Well, but you know, the only thing is, I, I read two of them, okay, and I apologize, I didn't read the others, so I assume the reasons are as good, but it bothered me making seven motions if one of them, if we feel that one's not as, you know.
Tyler, give us, give us your expert opinion, how we should approach that. Okay. That's a good point. From what I see in the excellent letters of explanation, looks like illnesses, children taking care of their affairs for elderly parents, and such like that, and not late last year, so.
If I'm not mistaken, none of these were late last year, and that's kind of been our track record and your recommendation.
Thank you. Here's, here's a good one, from an honest person. I think, I probably would not separate this out, make the same motion as the others. The others were sick, they were in a hospital, and children take care of them. Please accept my late filing for homestead exemption. I just missed the deadline. An honest man.
Yeah.
He was, but he, he didn't miss it last year, so.
I hope, I hope this helps him with a reminder for succeeding years, you know. Okay, colleagues.
Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Um, yes.
Do one.
Uh, one, include all seven names, I think.
Chairman, uh, in matter of the homestead exemption applications, for acceptance, we have seven. My motion would be to accept all seven, and specifically the individuals supplying are Donna L. Herrick and Lynn L. Herrick of Brady, Lois J. Reeves of Sunset, 2011, 2211 Sunset here in North Flatt, Darlene Yvonne Grogan, South Brady Moorfield Road, Moorfield, Nebraska, Clara K. Bensel of 18EC North Flatt, James L. Cooper, 419 North Hayes, North Flatt, Sandra, and I believe John McAvoy, am I reading that correctly, 95 South Bear here in North Flatt, Luna D. Hanson, 216 South Market Street, Brady. That is my motion to accept.
Second.
Third? We have a motion, a second, and a third, I think, but we'll just only take the second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Can you get ahold of them and let them know that that's the process? Thank you. Okay, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none? Oh, we'll get this out of the way first. Okay, so at 9:24, we will recess as Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. How are you doing?
Morning. I'm good.
Good, good. Got the table all to yourself?
Yeah. For now.
I was in the courthouse on the cruise. This is good day. Been a long time since I've been down there, kind of, I'm a courthouse.
Always so hot in the summer.
Yeah, down in that most part, and Saturday was a odd day, wasn't it? Step of cocaine, court on my side, heat of afternoon, so wild. First time ever for me.
Really? Really?
I can't tell why those numbers were also screwed up. I know those were last week, so we decided, and the families were on the wall. I'm gonna blame it on Jerry. Jerry was the end of the table. Everybody's catches are on the stage, right?
That is true.
We have a dilemma. Yeah, we had, when there were five of us, we were able to get through 82 protests in a four-hour period. When there were three of us, we got through 142. Not sure what we were gonna do.
I'd be glad to go to a late lunch.
You know, I think what we might do is, let's see, it's either you and I, or you and Jerry. Who gets the next?
The good thing about it is we don't have to worry about it for another year.
By then, I won't have forgotten everything.
Jerry had a whip. Boy, he just kept going, "Let's go, let's go."
Burn in daylight.
Nothing like a deadline.
What are you looking for?
I think this is the end. So here's your paper, click right underneath.
So when you said you moved out of by the house, was there a wind wheel rack there before?
No.
Somehow we worked that till after.
Well, it's more an ornament at this point.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We just didn't, they advised us not to leave it out in the canyons because it was gonna cause interference with personal weapons. So we put it out there. But there used to be.
You mean, of course?
Mm-hmm. We put in a solar well out in the canyons. Much.
It's probably because of.
Casting the shadow.
I'll be darned.
I had to remove a tree when I put in my solar.
I'll be darned.
So to prove it, because I love our wind wheel, it was my place of solitude at the end of a long week. So to prove that to us, they had our, while they installed it, they had our grandkids, who were little people, stand up there and put their hands up over the panels like this, and you could see the water flow.
Slow down. I'll be darned.
So it.
Okay, it is nine, hold just a minute, we're gonna take a minute, just to finish this up.
We are gonna put that up, so eventually.
There isn't one place I could put it, but it'd be cheaper for me to just try just there.
So when we bought the place, the system is right in the front yard, and it had a pump jack on it, and that is still there and still functions.
Okay, I should wrap that up so we can move on. Okay, it is 9:32. We will move on to our next agenda item is discuss and consider setting a date for public hearing on a resolution for an amendment to the Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article II, Section 2.03, definitions, and Article VIII, Sections 8.07 through 8.08, 06, small wind energy systems, and commercial utility-grade wind energy systems.
You know, I have a question about that. We're setting up. We're setting up a public hearing, but have we, so the planning commission has made a recommendation.
Correct.
To the board. The board before taking action requires a public hearing?
Correct.
More question on my part.
Yeah, and these two, well, this and the following item, were delayed because of a lack of a full panel, and I wanted to give a full panel so we had the best opportunity to get the best understanding of what the new regs that your planning commission has recommended, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so this is just setting another date for those public hearings. When do we want to have those? We need to publicize those, correct?
Yes. You just need to give Judy a date so she doesn't want to do publication.
Okay, and how much time do you need to have? How soon could we have these hearings? And you satisfy the legal publication?
We have to give a 10-day notification, so you wouldn't be able to do it next Monday. It would have to at least be the following Monday.
Which would be the first, would be the 7th of August?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, we have, we have a pretty busy meeting, I think, on the 21st. I don't know about the 14th, but the 7th works fine if that works.
I'm wondering, you know, you and I are gonna take a gander at some of this stuff. I wonder if other board members wanted a little more time to look at that or not. I'm not, I don't know, maybe they don't. Maybe they're ready.
Two weeks with this, I see what you're saying, and maybe the 14th might be a better date, to give more time for us to get.
Well, are we, is the board looking at, you know, carpooling or something, going up and looking at this?
That's why there's an item for that later.
We're gonna discuss that here after bed. Thank you.
Do we currently have any requests for projects in Lincoln County as far as solar and wind goes?
I do not have any applications on my desk. There's been talk about it, but yeah, I don't have any applications as of right now.
So this item's on here mostly because I had it put on here. The board's sitting on the moratorium, and the language of the moratorium that I drafted was it would be in place for a year or until such times as regulations are ready. Regulations have come out of planning, they got delayed because of missing board members, that's fine. I just think that legally speaking, we probably need to have a public hearing on the books. I don't really care when it is. We should probably have one scheduled, though. So if the board wants to delay until after the budget's done, that's fine. We just need to give Judy a date that she can shoot at.
Yeah. Sir, would you, turn on the mic there, please, and would you state your name and sign in for us, please?
Mark Loustrom.
Morning, Mark.
Morning. Me and my sister have had a wind project going for about five years here. And I needed two weeks to be fine. I'll bring in some people that will explain it to you some.
Okay, perfect.
But they've got to come from quite a ways.
Would the 7th or the 14th work better for?
Either, yeah, I think either one would work.
Okay.
I don't care.
I'd like to hear from our board if you have any other thoughts.
Well, yeah, I just was making sure that if anybody wanted to, and I wasn't gonna do all my homework on this Friday. I was a little caught off guard.
It is the 24th.
It was coming before, so as quickly I thought that was part of the process. We all have a little more time to look it over.
I say let's give ourselves a little more time, and let's go for, let's go for August 14th. Gotta give us more time to explore and go have a visit if nothing else, and, okay? August 14th. What time? How much time do we need to set aside, do you think?
Well, I'd put that at the end of the agenda.
We already have three public hearings and one other thing for Judy that day, probably, on some.
On that day?
Yes, on that day. So that's a lot.
What about the 21st then?
I would say there, the 21st is completely open.
We have a huge contract that we're gonna be working on.
We got bids on that. At 10 a.m. for that. So that's one dark bridge, we got bids on that.
On the 21st, you're saying?
That's the contract.
28 is the first one that's completely open. I mean, you guys, if you're gonna travel somewhere too, I mean, you guys might, I don't know how long it'll take you, but if you're gonna go to get where you're going, then tour it.
It would be a day trip.
28, well, you probably don't want to start it after your bridge bid. That's gonna be kind of a lot of.
Yeah.
It's either, it looks to me like either the 7th or the 28th.
Well, if you do the 28th, you can set it wherever you want, 10 o'clock in the morning or 10:30, get the rest of your agenda on the way. I don't know.
I suspect the matter might be more debated public hearing than most of the ones the board has. So you could be looking an hour, it could be three hours.
Okay, so, so with that in mind, let's get in the most open date we've got, so we give it the best discussion possible. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
So let's move that to the 28th.
What time?
What time?
You want to start on the 10?
Let's start at 10.
I won't do anything after these.
Okay, sounds great. At 10 a.m. Thank you, Mark.
I'll be here.
Okay, good enough. Thanks for coming in this morning.
That's okay. Thanks for talking to me.
You bet.
Probably have to vote for that. Ready?
Yes.
Chairman, I would move to set August 28 to 10 a.m. this, our public hearing on the resolution for an amendment to the Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article II, Section 2.03, definitions, and Article VIII, Sections 8.07, 8.08, 06, small wind energy systems, and commercial utility-grade wind energy systems.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the August 28 to 10 a.m. public hearing. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Hi.
Luler. Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider setting a date for public hearing on a resolution for an amendment to the Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article VIII, Section 8.12-8. Okay, dot 12 dot 06, solar energy. Could we have those follow right behind one another? Do we have to give a specific time for each one?
I usually, when I advertise, I would advertise them together. Or 10 o'clock, sorry.
Okay. Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set a date for public hearing on a resolution for an amendment to the Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article VIII, Section 8.12-8.12-06, solar energy.
And when was that date again?
August 28, 10 a.m.
We can't have both at the same time, can we?
That's how I always publish.
One.
One just follows right after the other.
Do we need, okay, so does that leave the chairman prerogative to run the solar first and the energy second? Doesn't, or vice versa?
Set solar first.
Well, I guess that's your, if you set them both at 10 a.m., I guess that would be your discretion.
Did we need a second?
Yes, we do.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, it's 9:40. It is, our next agenda item is discuss and consider authorizing board members to tour the Inverenergy project south of Sidney, Nebraska.
So this is another item that's on the agenda because of my meddling. In having some conversations with some of the Inverenergy folks who have been at the last board meeting to deal with these, and then at two or three different planning commission meetings, one of their representatives mentioned to me that they have a wind project south of Sidney. I believe that would be Pete's, Colorado, that is an active, ongoing Inverenergy wind farm, and they had invited one or all of the board members, anyone who wanted to come tour it and take an up-close, personal look at a project, to do so. Obviously, they have their reasons for wanting to show it off, but I felt, given the amount of time that was gonna pass between the, getting the last public hearing over and having the next one, it would give the board an opportunity to do some personal fact-finding, which would in fact be evidence come time to have our public hearing. So I passed that along with the chairman and Commissioner Wiems, and I decided to put it on the agenda for all the board to consider in case anyone else wanted to go, because there's obviously logistical concerns if you're, more than two of you are going, and then it could be an expense, so the board needs to make a determination on that.
Okay, and Ken and I did discuss that, and we think it would be in the best interest of us to have the firsthand visual inspection of that particular wind farm, and we are making, we've made preliminary plans to make that trip, and if others wish to do the same, it gives us a little time to do so.
And to Tyler's point, we hadn't really necessarily considered this an official trip. We were just wanna, wanted to go take a look, since we had some time, and just kind of take it all in. So I think it's good that it is on the agenda for further discussion, but we were just simply gonna jump and pick up and go up and look, take a peek. We didn't know when, his schedule, my schedule, and we might have time to.
It's goalpost, shouldn't it?
Is it really? No, let's go tomorrow then. At any rate, we haven't really made any travel plans yet. We just wanted some time so we could take a look before the hearing.
I have driven by a number of these facilities in my travels in several of our adjoining states and other states a fair distance away, but getting on-site and getting a close-up look kind of intrigues me, so I'm anxious to go.
Full disclosure, my brother-in-law is a project, was a project manager, retired from Barnhart Crane and Rigging out of Memphis, Tennessee, and he put up many of the wind farms in, in the Midwest and all over the United States. So I have a lot of inside information about wind farms.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just kind of leave it at that. We don't need a motion on that, do we, or do we have?
Well, there's, there's a motion or not, if one or the other of us wants to go up, there's nothing presents at a different time. I just, you know, if I see you guys up there and it happens to be the same day, I'll go have a cup of coffee. I don't have a cup of coffee, I don't drink coffee. Go have a Coke in Sidney and catch it later.
Okay.
Is that the business card that is here?
Yes, yes.
In case we decide we do want it?
Yeah, and if you do decide you're going up, just give us, just send me a little note.
Okay.
We'll make sure we don't go the same day or at a different time. Okay. Okay, sounds good. It is 9:46. Emergency Management Director Brandon Myers to give the quarterly report for April 1 through June 30, 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Brandon.
We have, oh my lord. Don't you ever take your time off? Don't you ever take your time off?
Not really. Brandon Myers, Director of Region Fifty-One Emergency Management. So, in this last quarter, see, fourth quarter amounts for fiscal year twenty twenty-two EMPG and EMPG ARPA reimbursements were submitted to the state. We're waiting a receipt of the funds. For the EMPG, the requested reimbursement amount is fourteen thousand, forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, with one thousand, twenty-seven dollars, and seventy-three cents of this reimbursement being sent to Hitchcock County, and one thousand, twenty-seven dollars, sixty-nine cents being sent to Dundee County for salaries. EMPG ARPA, the requested reimbursement was six thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, with one hundred and fifty dollars being sent to Hitchcock County and one hundred and fifty dollars being sent to Dundee County for operational costs. During this last quarter, we submitted one two thousand nineteen SHSP grant reimbursement totaling five hundred ninety-seven dollars, twenty-five cents, for twenty twenty HMGG SHSP grant reimbursement totaling thirteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars and five cents, for twenty twenty-one HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling eighteen thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents, and six twenty twenty-two HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling fifty thousand, eight thirty-nine and fifty-seven cents. We've also been working with hazmat teams to clean up two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty grants which expire here in August. We sent quarterly invoices to Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for their quarter of the approved budget for each county. This will be seven thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars, seventy-five cents from Dundee County, and six thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars, seventy-five cents from Hitchcock County. Dundee and Lincoln County hazard mitigation plans are up to date. Hitchcock County's hazard mitigation plan just received their final approval from FEMA, and my staff attended one last monthly check-in meeting with NEMA. I represent the Lincoln County, I represent Lincoln County for Lowes Canyon, CWPP, and Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for the Southwest CWPP, and both of those plans are up to date. All three counties are current on their LEOPS, and contact updates are currently being worked on in the bold planning software being provided by NEMA. The new hazmat plan section for Lincoln County LEOP is up to date, and credentialing efforts for all three counties are also continuing. Quarterly report to NEMA is completed and submitted. During this last quarter, I had a meeting with stakeholders concerning rave alert, attending meetings with stakeholders concerning the Lincoln County Courthouse generator, and met with stakeholders concerning possible flooding of the South Platte River, and how to handle it. Attended a dispatch meeting, attended emergency services pre-Nebraska Land Days meeting. Pam met with black shirt feeders about emergency access and visited their new site in Dundee County. I attended the NERHC C radiation tabletop exercise in Grant. Joanna attended the National Weather Service IWT workshop. Myself and Joanna attended a web EOC training. I attended a terrorism awareness class, FAA Aviation Emergencies for First Responders, QPR Gatekeeper Training Class. I also taught CPR to Police Department employees, CERT members, Miss Nebraska Contest, Contestants, Dentist Office employees, and did CPR first aid overview for a babysitter's, babysitter's class. Pam taught CPR BLS to Dundee County Hospital employees, and Joanna assisted a HMGG member with training paperwork. We held Lincoln County CERT meetings and trainings this last quarter. I did a radio interview with KODY and KOGA, and TV interviews with KNOP. I gave a shelter-in-place presentation to faculty at North Platte Community College and our Linkup meeting. Myself and Joanna presented awards for Lincoln County South Severe Weather Awareness Poster Contest. Joanna gave a preparedness presentation to Boy Scouts troop. Pam assisted Dundee County Schools with Accelerated Reading Carnival. Our office also monitored weather during the Nebraska Land Days events with myself on-site with NWS for the concerts. During this last quarter, we monitored daily weather. We had some severe thunderstorms for all three counties this last quarter. There was also the Watts Road Fire and IED hazmat incident, few minor grass fires, heavy rain, flash flooding event in Dundee and Hitchcock Counties, a wind and hail event in Dundee County. Myself, Pam, and Kyle were in Dundee County and Hitchcock Counties assisting with the response to the flooding event in May. Our staff has also been working with officials to obtain damage assessment information from this event. Kyle set up the EOC in Hitchcock County during this event, attended an emergency village board meeting in Stratton on five twenty-eight to discuss response and recovery. County declarations were signed for this event. I participated in the AR meetings concerning the IED hazmat incident and participated in the May twenty-five, twenty-six storm discussion with NEMA. Pam did damage assessment after the wind hail event. Staff attended two Lee Bird Field, one Goodland weather webinars. We're working on getting the mobile command center up and functional. Kyle met with Dundee County Dispatch to assist them in setting up text two nine one one capabilities. We've also been working with NEMA and FEMA on declared disaster DR forty-five twenty-one for the COVID-nineteen response. Request for Lincoln County materials has been obligated, and we are waiting funds. CATZ administrative costs for the city of North Platte, Lincoln County have been started. With the federal disaster ending, once the CATZ administrative costs are complete, we'll be working on closing things out. During this last quarter, my staff attended one South Central Pet Region, one Lincoln County LEPC, two Southwest Pet Region meetings, two Southwest LEPC, two NAM Board, one NREM Board, one NEMA discussion with EMs, four Nebraska Public Healthcare Coalition, two Linkup, one West Central Nebraska Tim, one West Central Nebraska Tim Trainer Kickoff, one South Central Nebraska EPA Subarea Meeting, one Nebraska Vote, one Nebraska Citizen Corps Council, two Nebraska Citizen Corps Council Executive Meetings, two Dundee County Hospital Training, one CISM debriefing, one Rapid SOS, four Lincoln County Commissioners Meetings, four Dundee County Commissioner Meeting, and one Hitchcock County Commissioner Meeting. I attended PET and Citizen Corps Subject Matter Expert Meetings, and Joanna attended the hazmat Subject Matter Expert Meeting for the two, for the twenty twenty-three IJs. Pam attended one Dundee County EMS Meeting. Kyle attended three Culberson EMS Meetings and three Culberson Fire Meetings. Pretty much, most of these are back to in-person, few straggling that we're still doing online. Upcoming events, Fourth of July Sutherland Parade, which we've done, South Central Pet Region IMT Exercise, Stop the Bleeding Training Class, Wolfstock, Web EOC Exercise, South Central Nebraska EPA Subarea Exercise, County Fairs, CERT Training for Civil Air Patrol Cadets, ESU sixteen Tabletop Exercise, a Bonny Dam EAP and Exercise, CERT Trainings, and then continuing our outreach and planning and setting up exercises and our trainings.
Tell me, the, you mentioned about the black shirt feeders and that feed yard and the emergency access visit down in Dundee County.
Yes.
What, what kind of activities are you folks involved with in that project?
Um, not a lot, really, just because it's them building their, their private lot. Pam is kind of unique down there because she wears a bunch of different hats. So, she's on the planning and zoning down there as well. But what we're trying to incorporate through all that is making sure that they do have access for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances and stuff in mind when they're building this.
Because they've moved that location to north of Hagler now, is that correct?
Yes.
How far north are you at all?
Um, that I'm not exactly sure.
It's kind of in.
It's still kind of out in the, the middle of nowhere, but yes.
And access is probably really important. I was wondering if that's what you folks were doing.
And I'd heard talk about them, the black shirt feeders possibly paying for dirt roads to be paved. But that, like I said, that's kind of just a rumor, but.
That would be dandy if, maybe we need to have, invite them to Lincoln County. Okay. Brandon, would you do something for me next time? Because we've got LEP, SWEP, LEPCA, NEMA, IMPAC, WUTK, MTC, SICNE, BOARD, DCHRI, SISM.
Do you know what all those acronyms are?
Could, could you just put together on, with every one of your things, what those are, then I don't have to ask dumb questions.
So, when I first came here, I asked Brandon to help me out with all the acronyms, and I still have your file that I could share with Joe.
But it would be helpful if we just.
To have it printed out.
That way, you just print it off every time it's there, and we don't have to.
When it comes down to that paragraph, we try and do the acronyms just because it would be like a page of.
No, no, but that way, when I sit at the desk, I just go, oh.
Yeah, if there was another attachment on, on the last page.
Just every time, just, just there.
That would be helpful, yes.
Okay, we can do that.
That, that way, you won't keep us guessing all the time as to what all these things are.
Well, we won't cut down another tree if we just laminate five copies and put them in your drawer.
There you go. That's a great idea.
And when he comes in, pull it out and look.
Yeah.
The other thing, the mobile command center, you're getting that set up, are you, pretty well?
Didn't what?
The mobile command center.
We've done a couple of things, but yeah, for the most part, we rolled it out at the Nebraska Land Days concerts, utilized it a little bit in conjunction with their new office that they provided for us as well. So, it's coming along. Just need to.
They provided you an office in that new building?
In that new building, yes.
Great, super.
We've always had, in the old building, we always had one. We just never utilized it. One, it was rather small. Yeah, this year with the new building, they, they actually, in mind with us for the concerts, had a, and it wasn't just for us, it was also for the secretary for the rodeos, but bigger room, large screen TVs, so that Weather Service can put stuff up and, and make it utilized that way.
Okay, last, the flooding down in the, what, the Oneida area, was it? Palisade?
Uh, Palisade, a little bit in Trenton, Stratton had the, the biggest areas of, of the flood.
Has that receded and they getting?
That receded within a couple of days, but with a couple of areas that were still creek-wise, that were still running pretty high, but right now, it's pretty much cleaned up and repairs.
Sounds good, sounds good.
We haven't had any changes or any developments on the generator.
Last, last email I, I received, I verified the generator is in. They're just waiting on the switch now. And NMC CAT's pretty sure that they'll have it sometime this week, and, because they've already got plans to try and make sure that they have it to electrical company by Monday.
Super, boy, that's good news.
We should probably get serious about the cement pad that we need to pour.
Yes. And I know Booker's been in touch with Hall's Electric and, and just kind of making sure that they're on that path and getting stuff ready, so.
You might, yeah, because they probably wanna do some boring first and then pour the pad, so they don't have to. You already have the conduit in place.
Yeah, and I, like I said, they, they've got a game plan, because there's a couple of things they've gotta move when they do do this. So, they just wanna make sure that they're ready for that and.
They're ready, they've got it thought or processed out?
Um, that I don't know. I just know that, you know, they've been, I know they've been, like Booker and Hall's has been talking, making sure that, that they're getting on the same page. They know their timeline, so.
Well, I've been, I've been around a couple, three of these kind of projects, and it's a lot easier to put your conduit in where you need it, than if you're gonna put it inside a small area, and then, you know, then form up and pour your pad.
Now.
After you've got conduit in place, and/or wire sometimes, but.
Would it be a good idea for us, Kent, to try to organize another meeting?
Maybe just have a conversation with Hall's, maybe with Brandon's coordination, we can make sure that they, we don't need to do anything preemptively as far as install, and, and obviously, they've talked and looked at this and analyzed it, but not saying they haven't, because they surely have, but.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we don't.
I know, I know.
Get our maintenance and grounds people.
Hall's biggest thing is making sure they've got the switch here before we actually close the courthouse. So, that's why NMC is making sure that as long as it's here on time, by Monday, they should have it, so that they can start all their process.
You know, again, been involved in a number of these on grain facilities, it's a lot easier to get all that stuff in place before you start pouring concrete slabs.
Yeah.
And maybe we should have a conversation with them. Are they, they're gonna be basically taking the initiative to do all that?
Yes.
Hall's, Hall's will?
Hall's?
Is that who?
Hall's will do the electrical, but Booker and his people are supposed to be pouring the concrete.
Yeah.
Well, let's have a conversation in the near future then with Hall's and Booker.
Yeah, get that kind of coordinated, so we get.
I'll be seeing a representative from Hall's later today.
Make sure that that's been thought through, because I've seen some very good electric, electrical companies overlook that, and then it's twice as much work to go work around stuff you've already put in place.
We don't particularly want a lot of delays on this, Steve, but we got the courthouse closed. Okay, so you're gonna be the point person on that for us?
Yeah.
Okay, super.
Brandon, how long has Joanna been working at Emergency Management?
Um, in August, it'll be nine years.
And do you still have the young man that was interning with you?
A little bit, here and there.
Here and there. Very good.
Okay, well, thanks for your report, sir.
Yep, thank you.
On a side note, Brandon did attend a phone meeting for the Text My Gov stuff, too, and I think he thinks maybe some of that might be applicable for him. So, we're actually gonna meet tomorrow to get some more. There's a mapping feature that we've seen for the first time, where you can literally map out certain areas, too. I think they said they imported, or they have about ten thousand numbers for us to start with, so.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, well, super.
So, Brandon thought that might work some for him, too.
Okay, good, good.
Very good.
Because right now, with Rave Alert, all we can really do is emergency messages only through it for the citizens, so being able to have something that we can do that's not emergency, but kind of a high priority informational stuff.
Something like sending out an alert if there's a controlled burning in your area?
Yeah.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, like I said, every time we do a demo, it seems like we learn something new. We're like, look at this cool little tool. We can just triangulate the people in this area. It's like, wow, we've never seen that before, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you again. Good news on the generator. Hope the switch gets here like your.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler, any need for a closed session? Okay, next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives.
Road superintendent is silent.
He is silent.
Tyler, I do have a question for you. I've received numerous phone calls around my district with concerns about pivot in-guns watering the roadways, both paved roads and county roads. Is there?
I can believe that's a crime.
I encountered, I encountered one this morning.
I, I do believe it is. So, what, what information should I give these citizens that are calling me? Call the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, I mean, it's a non-emergency matter.
Right.
I think we should want a law, but I forget what the law says. So, I think it's only one of those situations where the deputies, if they have a shower, you're in the pivot. Probably the deputy that's in the office will be through.
Been involved in a couple of those, and that's kind of how it works. If you can't get relief or response from the guy that's running the pivot, that's all you, you just need to call the business office over there and say it's, you know, on such and such road, and it's repetitive, and I'd like them to reprogram their in-gun, please. And that's where, I have a couple pivots, and I've had a phone call, and that was appropriate, because we, the old pivots just had an old mechanical switch that shut those in-guns off, and they're not perfect. Now, the newer ones, you program them, you can set them on your computer, on your phone, or your app on your phone. But if you're not there, and it comes around at four o'clock in the morning, and it's watering the road, a lot of times, to their, you know, defense, they don't know that. But if it's that way the entire season, then, yeah, they need to, somebody needs to address that.
And that's why I think they probably have to call dispatch, call nine one one, to get that recorded, especially if it's after hours. And we've gotten calls in the middle of the night.
Well, I do believe that the one landowner has had many conversations with the pivot owner, and there's been. And there's been no improvement, and I believe they've called the sheriff's office and probably the road department too, so.
Something to citation maybe in order.
Okay. Okay.
That is okay for us to get through all these claims before we go into the last item number eight?
Um, you can probably go into order of equalization and then come back out. Because you can come back out before the commissioners and they just sign them if you want to. I don't think Holles has got too many. The box is pretty low.
Well, you stuck in on us there. You didn't even do a warning, so we didn't.
How big? Good warning.
Um, do you need time to set up or can we work through this pretty easily?
Do you need Julie? Yeah, we need, we're going to go in for it.
No, I just need to resend some numbers. Just gotta do some homework again?
Who is my ad hoc subsidy on the employee?
That would be me and Kent.
I heard Kent, I couldn't remember the other.
That would be me.
Okay, I'll probably email you something. That's what it is.
Okay.
Very nice. Just numbers on all of these?
What'd you know? Okay.
Would you like to do this? Or does it matter? Do you want him to do these then? It's just numbers again.
We just have three outlets. Oh, I can do them again. I've only got two here. Julie, do you need much time to get ready for this?
Four fifty-four.
Four fifty-four, four thirty-two, and two twenty-eight.
Checking out?
Okay, we don't do it without steam.
She'd have asked Brandon if there was a fire reported near your house over the weekend with all those candles.
I told him that we weren't on wedding candles because he didn't have a burn. Funny, funny.
Sorry. I'm not far behind, so.
My little sister, one of my little sister's birthdays today.
Did you guys have to share a birthday party growing up like my sister and I did?
Half of that, yeah. That was over me. That dream was all happy.
We both had January, early January birthdays, so we shared a party.
Jason, oh, I'm sorry. How's the bid activity coming? How's the bid activity coming on the bridge? How many GCs have it?
I really haven't heard much. I've been talking to the engineer and they have a, a list.
Would you check some of the people who are bidding and give me a list of those names? Just email it, text it, whatever you want to do. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Also asking if, you know, somebody will just draw a set of plans unless they've had a dozen questions or something. You know, they're not really actively bidding it, so ask them how many they think are actively working it right now and might give us kind of an idea. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's on the bridge, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. It'd be nice to know if we, have you had many inquiries? Because we've still got a little time, but getting closer. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Lost my cap. It's like, I don't want blood.
Caffeine. Does caffeine do it for you?
Oh, yeah, maybe I made that up. Drinking my coffee.
You're not a caffeine drinker?
No, I, true story, last time I drank it, it was about four hundred fifty. My cousin got me in trouble and tried to sober me up. I have not drank it. Even the smell, I don't.
Yeah.
I relate. That smelled of bad times.
I, uh, I'm pretty easy.
So Melissa was going to do some checking and be back with us then?
I drank one.
Okay, so what?
And that's all the caffeine I need all day long.
Some people just have to have one.
If I drink anything with caffeine after lunch, then I don't sleep.
Oh, really? Oh, my goodness. I don't think I ever heard that from.
I'm not.
Pretty too much. You have too many things going on.
Yeah.
Your mind stays busy, that is always the reason.
Yep.
Really high achievers that sleep two, three, four hours a night almost, you know, you know, like Trump. I don't know how they do it. Their bodies holding up. I'm here maybe that way, but I can't.
No, no, I'm not really. I don't require a lot of sleep though because that was the job I worked for three years.
Body kind of got accustomed to it.
If I could, if I could get five hours in a row, sis was wonderful, then I'm good. But I would take afternoon naps when my kids are little.
Mine, probably this, about every hour and a half, you know. They wake you up and then you go back to sleep. I'm telling you, go to sleep, wake up. But I get, I shouldn't complain. A lot of people don't have that opportunity, so.
Do you struggle to go back to sleep once you get up?
Usually not. Like I say, unless there's something, you know, that bothers you, then nobody can go to sleep, yeah.
About this, and Melissa and I have talked about it, where there's so many new things this year. I think we're done with protests and everybody's kind of wrapped up. I think we're going to meet and kind of go over what worked and what didn't and what we need to do different next year. So if one of you or a couple of you want to come, I think that might be helpful to, we kind of all around.
You want me not to attend either one of them? That would be helpful?
Well, the chairman would probably be good, but, I mean, all in all, I think, I mean, we made it through, but it was just a lot. And I think there's some, my question applied what worked and what didn't.
Maybe we need to all have calculators here so we can do this.
That probably wouldn't help. Maybe it'd be good for the chairman and the vice chair, who will be the chairman next year, possibly, possibly.
Because this is a big number here.
Yeah.
I think they're kind of hoping you may have something.
Sure. Could be.
Says needed to get some more information. Oh, we're speaking of, yeah, here she comes. Not that we're waiting on you, but we are waiting on you.
Sure you're not? You're so exciting.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, Mo, sir, you ready? You ready?
Yep.
Julie, you ready? Okay, it is, it's ten eighteen. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Our item, our agenda item is to discuss and consider 2023 property valuation protests, Form 422. Here's as though we have a few minor corrections to make on some of the protests. Is that correct? Would you, how would you wish for me to proceed on these?
We just need to resend them and put them in as the correct numbers.
Okay, um, I have in front of me protest number sixty-one. Asin Boo, nine twenty North Jeffers. Property ID four four eight four five. Town lots, company twelve twenty-nine. This is actually property at thirteen oh one West Second Street.
So the, that, that one does not match, so it's on the referee part? So the referee is, matches everything, but on her report, it's six eighty instead of five eighty? Her calculations were wrong?
That is correct. There was a, an addition error on the referee's, a six eighty was recorded, where it should have been five eighty.
I think that was also incorrect on the assessor's one too. Does it say six eighty? On my copy, it says six eighty.
All I see on.
It wasn't wrong on the? I don't know. I didn't read it. On the front?
On the front, it says five eighty. Five eighty for a total.
And that is the correct amount.
That's out of the correct amounts.
Okay.
Adam motion to withdraw that?
Everything is correct on the front.
Yes, that one was corrected, but there is still an error because from the assessor or referee, because the referee's side does not match what's on the front page.
So you're just going to read in the correctional.
I'll just correct, read in the correct amounts, correct? So this, this was ruled on and there was a, a change in the, no, there was not a change in the valuation. So this was a protest to the county assessor's office recommendation. And the referee's recommendations are the same, although there was an addition mistake on the paperwork from the referee. So what I will read in is after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change. So the amounts of our land will be valued at seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Improvements at fifty seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for a total of sixty five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
I didn't rule on this one, did I?
Okay.
Upstate.
Upstate. Okay, let's take them in order here. Uh, next one that I have in front of me is protest number two two eight, Mr. William Straub. Ten nineteen West Ninth Street, property ID of eight three seven five, Bellevue Edition eight eleven.
I just want the condition correction as well from the assessor's side to the, what is on your guys' report side?
Yes, this was a, just a recording error when we recorded the decision of the board. Correct amount for total should be twenty nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. It was recorded as twenty nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. So I will read in on this particular protest, the reasoning and then the correct numbers. So after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I moved to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. Land is at nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars, building at nineteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars. Total of twenty nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, and you will make that change on this. Do I make that, I should make that change down here, should I not?
Initially, beside you, please.
Okay, protest number three six zero, Tracy Byrd, twenty one oh one West Sixteenth Street here in North Flat. Property ID of five zero seven six five. Mobile home sitting on a lot, on Lot twenty-nine, address above. So this is on buildings only, not the property. And again, we have, this did not go to the referee, so we don't have, yeah, we did go to the referee. And what was?
Should be a recording error as well.
Come help me with that if you would. She's got forty thousand.
But it's this.
It's this.
This is the one that charity made the adjustment. Is that right?
Yep. So what is the amount that's over there?
Uh, forty thousand is what I have.
Right. That was the referee's and that's wrong.
It should be fifty nine eight eighty.
But there's a one on the back though, correct? This is one that charity did some research on during the meeting and it was the fifty eight four oh two is what it needs to be.
Okay, sounds great. So this gets adjusted in both locations, correct, up here? Okay, this is a valuation that, the valuation was lowered. So after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I moved to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. And this is on improvements only, and this value is fifty eight thousand four hundred and two dollars. Can I make the adjustment here? I should make that change and initial it, correct?
Yes, please.
Well, second to Mo.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Just the number of papers. You'll be last. You'll be learned. Okay, the third one I have in front of me is protest number four three two. Robert Ziegler. Eight twenty East Fifteenth, North Flat. Property ID one four seven four, excuse me. Let me repeat that, please. Property ID is one seven four nine five point two one? Is that a nine? It's three oh five? Can't tell whether it's another.
Four four five.
It could be, it's. Yeah, it, it is a little bit.
Is it clear on the card, would you turn back?
Oh, good point, I never remembered.
Yes. Left hand?
It's nine five, back here on the yellow card.
One seven four nine five.
Point two one.
One four, one seven four nine five point two one. Sure, I keep forgetting to check that value out, that's. So the legal on this is Fosse's Replat Lot Two. So on this one, we have, uh. Error in recording as to what the. Land value, this is land only, correct? So this was a, uh. I need to read that statement.
Here, Jerry?
Here, thank you, okay. Here we go, so, um. My motion is I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates, uh, no change at this time. Valuation is equalized with like. Like kind properties. So this would be, land will be valued at nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. None on the improvements for a total of nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Eubank?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, so that, uh. That changes, uh. Takes care of these three. Garrett, do you have one to do?
I do have one, I have protest number four fifty-four. For Ben Suedberg, does this need to be rescinded? This one needs to be rescinded because it was read in incorrectly. So I make a motion to rescind protest number four five four. For property ID zero zero six two two four six.
Second, I'm sorry.
Uh, the amounts were read into the record incorrectly.
Eubank?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
So protest number. Four five four, Ben Suedberg. Zero zero six two two four six. Suedberg Administrative Replat Hillcrest Estates. Protested value was two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and nine. He requested a lower valuation of a hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred. This was reviewed by Henry. And Henry's recommendation was no change, information provided does not warrant a change. That put the land at twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Buildings at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-four for a total valuation of two hundred and eighteen five hundred and nine dollars. My motion is number four. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Eubank?
Aye.
Luwer?
Aye.
And I'll go to Aysen says a new one.
Okay.
Is that all? See? Okay. Julie, we got everything for you we need?
So far, I think.
Okay.
Tomorrow's the last day.
Yeah, this is perfect timing. Anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Okay.
We adjourned.
We will adjourn at ten thirty-two. As the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, and we have a little more. Claims to take care of. Thank you for taking care of those down in my pile, sir.
No problem.
He has her own system anyway.
Yeah, I do, I knew it was fifties. I don't know, last week we ended up with three claims missing. That's why you guys had to resign those, they never turned up, so.
Oh my goodness, maybe I should check my pile.
Redone now.
These are Bill and I were here to put them in the drawer. I think I put one with my. Agenda in at one time.
Yeah, it happens sometimes, you guys get some paperwork shopped around here at that place.
I think Bill had the same problem one day.
I guess it just depends on what they're thinking.
Well, we got pretty good credit. Now that is, isn't it?
Yeah, but you know, maybe it's not. Considering the cost of prescription meds.
If you get somebody that saw any kind of psych crap like that, it's just. You're dad or like, some of these heart things that are a couple hundred bucks.
Um, diabetic medication has gotten.
Has it?
Very expensive.
Yeah, right here, ten tablets. They're fifty bucks a tablet.
Wow, yep.
I'm glad.
I will check on.
At the jail, nobody I know.
That's good, somebody made a note, I will check on, what, PL six or something? Pills maybe.
I will check on.
Anyway, I'm glad somebody else noticed the. Cars. I know that people. You know, like if they, it's really a cattle broke or something, they take their, sometimes we had to do an emergency thing, but we just usually just pull the tooth or something, you know. Need people that are used to the system. You know, sometimes sort of looking at ideas just.
That's kind of ominous, they received most of the discussion.
I don't know, I know we're supposed to, uh. Ask them if they have insurance and file, but. Whether that happens, I have no idea.
Oh. Give me a.
I take it as a good sign that you so comfortably come back in here, but we didn't. Completely run you off last time, sneaking. I'd get an email from Jim Griffin at the Historical Society. The plat book that was given to me. Did I giving to him? Lincoln, he did not have one.
Really?
He had. Previous and after, but he did not have that particular book, so.
Really? I need to ask him, he'll spend a couple of those pages off for me.
I still have it, I haven't run it over to him yet, do you want to have Tammy take a copy?
Yeah, I, I would like to, before you give it to him, I'd like to, there's several of those, I'd like to make copies. My kids ask me about.
Yeah.
Who used to live over here, and I can remember the name.
Yeah. Take, take some copies, I haven't run it out to him yet, we're having a hard time catching each other.
It fills in a lot of blanks on, on history of some of my extended family, because. My wife's related to the. Lindermans, and they used to live up there on the table. And, uh. I was trying to tell them what, where I thought their place was, because they were long gone.
You know, like in our neighborhood, one of the homesites, their original homestead homesite was out in the middle of a pivot. And then they moved it, so it's not exactly in the same location, but.
That's changed a lot of things.
Yes.
They used to work around building sites, now they just level them. Eliminate them.
Yep.
Got a chance to recover some money out of that over there.
Looks like it.
Not the cheap pick-up for.
And you know, it's just like the lead department transferring their inventory to the leaving grounds and, and the road department will. Side by sides and there's no cost, it's just paper.
Yeah.
Jesus God.
Oh, now, who, who, hold on.
Painting on the.
Let me see that.
Probation.
Oh, this is a negative, same thing, okay.
I wonder who we use.
I saw the name was the same on it.
There is no labor, it's all been free. Paint's not cheap, though. I just bought a bunch for my house outside. Twenty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. That must not have been for paint or labor.
Maybe that was for stirrups.
It's for nine inch, uh. Rollers, maybe. Last one, Jerry.
That is the last one.
What was the amount on that last one again, Kent, twenty-one sixty-two?
Four.
Twenty-one sixty-four?
The very last one, twenty-one dollars, twenty-four cents.
Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four, not sixty-four.
Nice.
Especially that I get bill number every month.
Always going to watch your best one, I'm ready to develop, I should have. It's a nice little return on an investment there.
You bet.
So the gentleman that was in on the win for it. He has.
One in the works. That's what I'm told.
North, north and west flat?
That way.
And north? Yeah.
I'm not sure where all the ground is.
Bray's Maxwell?
North, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
John Lustrum's, John Lustrum was his dad, was a lot, had owned a lot of property.
He had seen, read my news, but, you know, quite a few people he took in, you know, to talk, so.
Little read on the, here's a little read on the phone, the other. Kent, that we pulled from. Pulling in. He's a great reader. Ken had a ten million board budget.
Okay.
Seven thirty or something, but I'll give.
Perfect.
Jesus.
Okay. That works.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board? Tammy, do you have anything for us? Becky? What's that? Oh, okay. Uh, hearing nothing, uh, let's, uh. It is ten forty-six, we will adjourn.